...meeting of June 25th at 6:30. The first order of business is approval of minutes. We are going to table June 4th minutes because I wasn't here. And we need two members to enact them. I've reviewed the 11th and the 18th and they were fine by me. If they're okay by you, we will pass them.
Is that consensus?
By consensus, thank you. And the next order of business is community input. I know there's at least two folks here for community input. I have an email from them. Do you want to come on up and we'll have a conversation?
You want to?
Yeah.
Where do you want to?
Come sit right up here and we'll have a conversation.
Front and center.
Sure. Easier for me to hear anyway, so.
All right. Yeah, I'll recoup it. I got hearing aids.
I think I need them, so anyways.
All right, my name is Alan Patterson. I live at 654 Main Street, about across the street. And I'm here because I have concerns, my wife and I have concerns about Paul's integrity on the way he has his cars. It seems like every time that we come back from Georgia, he's got more cars there than what he's supposed to. On the right side, towards Church Street, there's four spaces there. And those were supposed to be reserved for employee parking. At the present, he has two cars. One of them is unregistered, a truck. That truck used to be on the other side last year. It hasn't moved. He hasn't done anything to it. The other side has quite a few cars that have been there since last summer. Some of them, even though that they have 2018 stickers on them, they haven't moved. And my understanding that those cars would, if they're under repair, would only be around 14 days at the max. If my memory serves right when he was here in trying to get a lease from Ken Boldak.
I don't remember. It sounds familiar. It sounds like it's in the right ballpark. I don't remember if it was 14 days or not, it's passed. He now owns the building, just so you know.
What he does own?
He owns the property now, yeah. He's not leasing anymore. I have noticed some of the vehicles that are there as well. The ones on the left hand, if you're looking straight on, the ones on the right-hand side, I think there are there two unregistered vehicles or just one?
I didn't really look at the other one.
There's a truck that, or SUV of some kind of gray, beige color or silver color?
Yeah.
That's no tags at all.
The one that's out front?
Yeah.
That's been there since we came back.
At least a couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah. And even though he's tried, he worked on it twice this week. That's the first time I've seen him working on it.
Okay. I was trying to recall if I saw them working on it before and just didn't think it was a new truck or I drive by it every day myself, so I didn't. I will say though, while you were away, the cars did move in and out of there. I mean, that's.
Well, I'm not saying that they, you know.
I understand completely that the cars on the side closest to you, they're not supposed to be parked there. They're supposed to be employee parking, so that needs to be rectified. What we can do is send the, if you're okay with that, sending the code enforcement officer either over there, having him send a letter, which everyone he thinks is
Whatever's appropriate.
is the most appropriate course of action. He has a sort of a protocol he follows.
Yeah.
Sends the letter first, then follows up with the business. I can't recall which way, which order he does it, but he'll handle it.
Yeah. This is the one that's got a red state inspection on it.
Oh, yeah.
And it's got a green on the license.
If you don't mind if I make a big one?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, it's expired anyways, the state sticker. They don't look like that anymore.
And the other, the issue was that he wasn't supposed to have any snowmobiles on that property.
Anyone?
Store any of the snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles or boat or something like that.
So can I ask a question? Since I wasn't here when this all took place. Is this, was this agreement because he was renting from Boldak?
No.
Or is this agreement of a business?
The planning board.
Okay.
And we had to go through site review because it was a change in use of the business.
Okay.
It had been a bus depot for years and then kind of a repair shop came and said, well, you have the buses there. So it went to the planning board process. And as part of the site review, there were certain conditions that he had to keep the property up to, so.
Okay.
It's the select board's responsibility to enforce that.
Okay.
I would also say though, we need to find out if Hank Brant owns the property where Paul used to be. I think he still does.
The one on Locust and Prospect too?
Yeah, right.
Yep, 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 yep.
Up the street from there. They're doing a similar thing, so we need to figure out who'd spend that money to.
That's why I didn't know if it was a previous agreement with him and Mr. Boldak or if it was.
No, it was, the deal he was supposed to be living up to up the other street too, so. And the new people probably don't know, but they don't have to go through that.
Since he owns the property, is that something that's, everything, what was said on that paper?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's the use.
I just didn't know. That's why I asked. I didn't know.
All those conditions doesn't matter. I just wanted you to know that he owns it now.
Yeah.
It's not Ken anymore, so. No, all those conditions still have to be, doesn't matter if he owns it or someone else buys it. Long as there's a garage we can operate it, or that's what, those are the conditions that need to be met for anyone to operate it.
Yep.
So we will follow up.
This is the other car.
That's the one that was, oh, that's on our stick. That was the other side of that.
That's been there for a while and it's unregistered because it's got a red sticker on the plate. And there's one. And there's one that's all the way down at the end that the, there's a truck in
California.
in front of it. That hasn't moved. And that's been there for quite a while.
I'm looking at it right now. The red truck maybe?
No, the, it's a blue truck.
Oh, sorry. Looking at the same picture, sorry.
Yep.
There's quite a few vehicles there that need to be taken care of. All right, so we'll send him over there. It might be easier just to go over there first and then follow up with a letter than if he doesn't.
Yeah.
He's been, when we had to send someone over there or send a letter, he's been quick to respond, so.
Yeah, because we always get this thing like says, under his breath or not under his breath, but just allowing up to here is those people always just mind their own business. And I, my wife had walked by that one time and he said something sort of snappy to you.
Yeah, didn't want me on his property. Didn't mind if the dog was there, but not me.
He's a neighborly.
I'm not too.
All right, we'll, we'll send him over.
All right.
Sorry that you had to come in for this, but.
Oh, no. I just know, just wanted to know if there was a change in
No, no.
Other than I, as a matter of fact, I just heard today that he, that he owned it. And I never heard anything about that.
Yeah, he bought it from Mr. Boldak. I don't remember how long ago now. It's been months.
Yeah, because he still was leasing it when we were, before we left.
Yeah, it was, it was winter time, I believe, or maybe either just before or just after the tax bills went out. Because he was talking to me, asking a question about it, yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate any help you can do.
No, no, well, there are conditions that need to be met, so we'll follow up on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other key to the business? If not, we're going to move on to department head. Mr. Road Agent, come on up.
I don't have anything other than, I was going to just came in in case you had questions on the trucking.
Okay, we can, you know, why don't we pull that up then? We've got, I think in the, you've got it in the folder here somewhere the
Do we have the?
For speaking code, sorry Cory. It's the demolition hauling.
Do we have a contract here?
Municipal solid waste and demo hauling contract. Right, those are the bills, I think, we need just.
Oh, front folder, sorry.
Doesn't mean to snatch it away from you. All right, so what do we have here? On-call, it's $225 all ready, is that what it says here?
Yeah. Triano?
Yeah.
For Tri, Triano. Troiano, easy for me to say. I wasn't trying to say.
We called different places.
Yeah.
Shipyard and Triano is the only one that gave us prices.
Okay.
Panade didn't want nothing to do with it because they don't want to haul the waste.
I got you.
And Casella, who owns their own landfill, doesn't want to haul the waste.
Ah, fair enough.
And we didn't bother calling Waste because we already know they're already hiding everybody around.
Or we'd be using. All right. Could be different. Do you want to take a look at it? And so this is for both the demo and
Trash.
MSW. And the contract with our current hauler ends on the 30th, right?
30th, right, right, right.
We'll be storing a lot of garbage if we don't enact the contract tonight.
The land re, I think it's done the end of week.
Right, so.
So who signs this? Does he sign it? Do we sign it?
I'm going to have to sign it for Suzanne. She's not here.
But
We don't want to store garbage until she comes back.
There's a hundred dollars difference trip.
Yeah.
Raise your shipyard, so.
Yeah.
Say it one more time.
It's a hundred dollars cheaper than shipyard.
Yeah, so.
Right, yeah. And how long is the contract for? One year?
One year, I think it is.
Renewable each year?
Looks like one year. Effective day, July 1st, 2018. It's here somewhere. I just saw it. Price of payment, customer should pay. All right. This is our best quote. This is our best quote, so.
Include surprise at the tip.
Are we, are we good with this one? Well, how, take a motion, then we should do it.
Motion to accept. I can't say that. What is it?
Triano, I think.
Triano Waste Services to be our waste hauler.
Yeah, we have waste haul for the next year.
For the next year.
I'll second it. Are there any other questions for George? It's a hundred dollars cheaper than what we're paying now. So I was saying, so.
Yeah, I think Shipyard is over $300.
Kiki. Well, either way, it's a cheaper bid and it's our best bid, so we need to get rid of our garbage, so. All right.
Triano is still going to be doing the recycling.
Recycling now? Shipyard is still doing recycling?
I'm being anyway to go and discuss the other stuffs.
Okay, all right. And do we know if Triano might be interested in doing our?
Very.
They're very interested, okay, well then.
So why didn't they quote it both at the same time?
We didn't want to bring up the recycling yet because there should be some big changes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we'll deal with the big changes when you want to.
We're talking with MMNE or whatever the heck.
What?
New Hampshire RRA or whatever, the recycling company.
Yeah.
They give us ideas of how we should approach this.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because the price of recycling is going down the tubes.
All right, I know the Chinese aren't buying
Right.
our glass anymore, right, so.
Oh, yeah, anything that goes over there is, because
If they're recycling their own, I think so.
was dirty. They want 0.5%. And the company in Massachusetts has tried and the best they can do is 0.9 and there's no way they're going to get that. And they are full of junk.
All right, mm, okay. Anyway, let's pass this one first. All right, so all those in favor of Triano Waste Services, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, I will sign it then.
Yeah, we've been talking. There's nothing we want to bring up yet. We just want to get some more discussion on it and more info.
As long as Shipyard is going to continue to make it, we're good.
They're using their dumpster and stuff, but Triano will be using our stuff and that's one less thing to do if, when that comes.
I'll put that back in the folder. I don't have that, all right. Sounds for George.
Landfill post-closing report.
I think he thought that we might not have to do that.
Oh.
Pardon?
The post-closure report. We have to do the annual report, but I don't think we're going to have to do the post. She called up there, said something today that we may not.
Oh, okay, well, that I didn't get an update on, so.
Right, that happened today.
All right, then I'm not going to, well.
I'd leave it to you.
Do that next week.
Next week, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that on then. And assessment training, I think we need to wait for budget review with Suzanne, right? Isn't that why we kept it on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I don't have anything else for George. Like I said, before the meeting started, I thought it looks really nice down on Woods Run and on Heritage, so well done.
I, we haven't got any complaints and I've asked, you know, if people have any complaints, I'd like to know, but nobody's getting anything other than positive, so.
Yeah, yeah.
No one's complained yet about, oh, the tie-ins aren't perfect or anything? We've had it on other roads, so.
No, because they all know it's going to be done next year.
Well, I understand that, George. That doesn't stop people.
No, actually, they were, they were happy to see the way it was done, so.
Good, well, perfect. Must get even better than when the road.
There may be a complaint coming caused by vibrations, supposedly a crack in some sheet rock, but I, kind of hard to believe, but we'll go from there. We might be getting.
Someone's house, like when a, what, reclamer went by or something, or? Or truck, I don't know.
I never heard of such thing, but, I mean, we walk beside that vibrating wall.
Right, right, right.
I don't believe, I, you know, take it as way to do some damage.
Which location?
River Road.
Yeah, everything's a hundred feet off the road.
Oh. Well, we'll wait for the complaint then, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it may not even, might not even arise.
Oh, okay.
Call the insurance company, just give them a heads up and see if it's anything, so. Just like, well, that's the, that's the only issue that might arise.
Okay.
Have they done anything different anyway? You had to do what you had to do to get it done.
I can imagine.
That's why we create the road, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Contacted.
Fair enough.
And I, like I said, I got nothing, I got a couple things I'll bring up when we're, after the 4th. When we just get to the 4th and
All right.
we'll try this one.
Perfect. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, we don't have, oh, wait, done? We don't have, police may be coming a little later and fire, so we'll maybe try to drag our feet for them tonight. We don't go as quickly, we'll.
Is that mine? Is that mine back there?
Is it fire to you? I don't know. No, we'll find out in a moment. Okay, town administration budgets. We've kept on the residence tax versus in inventories, doing away with both. Again, we'll wait till Savannah comes back to act on that, but I'm not going to say anymore, but just wait until she comes back. Unless you want to say her.
No.
Okay, so we will table that.
Can I say something about?
Sure, of course.
I think that possibly we should invite Andrea to man and plead her case
Yeah.
to us, because it may not be as much, but just seeing the line, it doesn't really explain the whole picture of it. And I know that, you know, they're not doing inventories anymore. I mean, people don't use that information anyway. The residence tax is loss of revenue, but there could be higher expenses and we don't really getting it yet. So I would say when Suzanne comes and the three of us are here, maybe
What by?
she needs to come in and just really give us
I agree with you.
You know, and then we're a little more informed.
Yeah, I mean, other thing to think about, there is a loss of revenue with inventory as well.
Yes, that's true. I, yes. I don't like it how that happens.
I don't either. I don't like how we get the income from it either. It seems like a pretty
Backdoor way.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
But you're right. You, exactly.
But it is, it's actually a loss of revenue. So we're not doing anything with the information.
To me, it doesn't make sense to continue to do it, but.
Like an underhanded way to get revenue from people. If you're not actually even using the information, you're fighting them for not giving you. And that is. That's how the state operates, so. All right, allows us to. So we'll invite Andrea to come in with Suzanne.
Awesome.
Okay. The revised budget, I think we'll probably take management of the transfer station to offer this year, but hauling will need to be revised, obviously. Saving money. We will advise Suzanne of that when she returns. 2019 training for boards.
I know what that is. It seems that we have a lot of new people getting on the boards. ZBA is one of them.
Yeah.
And there's never any money in the budget to do these, training of these new people. And, you know, I think that we should have a line in there every year, whether or not it's used or not, but at least have the opportunity to have it in there. Because the ZBA is, like, 75% of them are new people.
Right.
And you have to have the training or otherwise you're going to make mistakes and, and so. So I'm not sure if I asked them to have that put in just to put it up for discussion, but I think that, you know, we did it for budget committee, you know, we could do it for selectmen, we could, you know, we have a lot of people that just need to have information. The municipal association does these trainings as well.
We have the ZBA training on the agenda, further down on the agenda that we need to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, no, it's a point well taken. So we should add that under the category, I would think, or it is under budget.
It is under budget.
For 2019.
Right, yeah, yeah. I just, you know, I just think it's something that's worth it and cost us.
Why don't we leave that on? We'll table it for now. So when Suzanne, and I believe she wants you to work with her
Mm-hmm.
on preparing next year's budget, we'll table it now so that she has, can make a note of it when she gets back.
Absolutely.
So, and she keeps a very long list of things that we, at meetings throw up and say, wouldn't it be great if we could, you know, and then at the end of the year we say, okay, is it not practical? This is not going to happen, you know?
Yeah.
We whittle this down to where we think we can do things, but and we will table that. Well, that's a great idea, though. Post-meeting chores, that's also tabled because that is Suzanne's. And the far chief is here, just saw him, so.
I think he just left.
Oh, all right, well, maybe he didn't want
I don't know.
Maybe he didn't want to talk to us.
You went back.
Oh, we went back, no.
That's okay. Transfer station is being tabled by my request. That's okay. Although I have started looking at it, especially against the, the one other issue is not just it's not just the transfer station stickers issue, but there's also inconsistencies between the the minimum housing standard and the transfer station ordinance. We want to make them more cohesive.
Okay.
If anyone can get a transfer station sticker, why is there a requirement for having dumpsters or removal? There's also an issue of
I'm just going to have someone come in tonight to talk about that.
Right, someone had complained about, I don't see her yet, so.
No.
But under, it's coming up, for, that's coming up under E, we could talk about it then, but we'll just table the other one. General services agreement for Hoyle Tanner, that should be in the, for signature. We are clear with the liability company, so we're good to sign. I have spoke to Ms. Kendall and we should be good to go. We've probably got the bottom of the file.
Of course.
Right? Because it's been, we keep putting it off for a couple of weeks now because we want to get an answer, but we're good to go, so.
And on the other side? Is it? Professional services?
Yep. Yep, okay. All right, this one's our copy, so. This was the, again, the excuse me, the general services agreement between the town and Hoyle Tanner to do on-call engineering services for us. We have executed these agreements in the past with them. And we're about to do it again, I believe. What I can, just so everyone understands, we're all on the same page again, the scope of services. Hoyle Tanner may be called upon to provide professional engineering services, including but not necessarily limited to the following. Project management, engineer design of bridge or culvert rehabilitation, repairs, replacements. Engineering design of roadway, it's a very long list, Cory, I'll just show it to you. Probably easier, there's several of them, there's a dozen of them, so.
I'm recording some.
Oh, you're recording, even better. Engineering design of roadway rehabilitation, repair of or of new roadway projects. Much like soup and nuts there. Evaluation of existing municipal utilities, including water and sewer. Transportation planning services, construction phase site inspection services, traffic counts, traffic studies. Intersection design and/or intersection signalization design. Engineering review of planning board submittals for compliance with state and town regulations. Preparation of environmental permit applications. And providing assistance with engineering expertise as may be requested, which probably would have been easier just to say K because that not very much encompasses it all, but for each task, Hoyle Tanner will prepare a brief scope of services defined by task order. Man-hour, cost estimate proposed, scheduled for the town, the town's approval. So basically, I mean, the Hoyle Tanner will not begin any services for an assignment until authorization to do so by the town. I mean, this is, this is sort of like an on-call for them, so that we remain one of their clients, but so we stay in their queue, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So are we in favor of signing the, having you sign the agreements?
Mm-hmm.
Do you make a motion to?
Motion to accept and sign the agreement for Hoyle Tanner.
The general services agreement?
General service agreement.
Second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That's been executed, my goodness, it's finally done. Now sign both copies. All right, so that's executed, yay.
Okay, so I don't have to sign?
Oops, Steve? Yes. Chair hangs alone on that one, so.
Okay, so.
That one's good to go. So dumpsters for buildings of, it says four more units, which I think has been a sticking point with some folks. And there was someone who was going to come in tonight and talk to us about it. The ordinance that we passed, the, the letter is or rather, the, the list was supposed to have been compiled. I have not seen the list come to us or a letter yet, so follow up with Caroline again in the front office, because they were the ones that were very concerned about this. But it's under minimum housing standards, so it's Article 2, responsibility of owners. If you look at section 2019-01-9, under Article 2, subsection B. In premises containing more than four dwelling units, the owner shall supply garbage disposal facilities or garbage disposal containers for all dwelling units. Now, how do they can have them removed themselves, or they can, or have a dumpster, or, you know, have a garbage person come and collect them, as some folks in town do. But it's not four or more, it's more than four. So you have to have five or more. So that's
Five or more?
Units.
Units.
In a building. It's not four or more, it says more than four.
Okay.
So maybe that's something that needs to be clarified next year.
And next year.
In a, in a, in a warrant article to, to say four or more, I would think, but I think that was our intention. But it clearly says more than four.
Okay.
So we will need to go back to the folks that are drafting the list of that they believe they need a garbage disposal facility or, or service. It should be more than four, so. I know there was someone who came in, one of their tenants came in to get a
And got turned away.
a transfer station sticker again. Was turned away. Clearly, the ordinance says, well, two issues. Clearly, the ordinance under the transfer station says that any resident of the town is allowed to have one. Doesn't matter if you rent or if you own, doesn't matter, it says that you, a resident is allowed to have a transfer station sticker, so. They should have gotten it just because of that, but also, they don't live in a, in a, in a place where their landlord is required to take care of the garbage for them, so. Give them something with a garbage.
So then they're gonna get rid of it somehow, they're gonna get a-
Before they're not thrown on the street, so, should give them a transfer station sticker, in my opinion.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page for that one. Well, that, recreation, our, was the first day of camp today. And as far as, at least one Rolo family member was very happy with it, so. Something I will turn it over to you, because you're our keeper of all things recreation.
I, I haven't heard anything about today. I do know that we still have some things that we have to work out.
Okay.
So I am working on those two chairs.
Yeah?
Do you wanna add anything, so yours, Harvey? Did you go today at all?
I did, I dropped my son off, and I've been emailing communication with the chairs about some things, and I'm deferring to them to answer.
Okay.
I did bring a permission slip that we had on the drive for teen camp, slightly adjusted.
Can we, we can take it out now, so we can take it out of order, that's fine. So children walking to and from camp, is that what this is about, so? Okay, so there's, I will set this, do you want me to set the stage, or shall you set the stage?
Well, they, we have a parent who wants, who just lives across the street or something, that wants their child to be able to leave and go home. And all it says is two thousand eighteen Camp Raleigh permission to walk or ride bike unattended to, from the Rollins for grade school, the child's name, and permit their child to leave camp at the following times, and they understand that my permission is to remain ineffective for the duration of the entire summer camp program, and then the parent signs it and dates it. We did, oh, it was the-
There's one, like-
It's a sixth grade student that lives directly across the street from the school, so.
Right, I know, but Caroline had sent something that said to make sure that you put something-
So this is the same, the other one said two thousand eighteen teen camp instead of Camp Raleigh, and it didn't include unattended, so unattended was added.
That's what it was, okay, I couldn't remember what it was, okay, thank you. So anyway, um,
So, but, so-
I mean, it's apparent-
The teen camp are allowed to come and go-
Because of age.
Because of the age, right?
Right, but they still have to have a, they still have to sign, have a signed permission slip. You just changed teen camp to Camp Raleigh, so, because we didn't want any younger children to go.
And I still stand by the original decision, but, I mean, if it's the parent's desire, and they literally live across the street from the school, is my understanding, I mean.
I know, I agree.
I don't, um-
They're gonna put their name on it, that's-
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I don't want every single kid being able to go willingly in and out of the camp, so, but.
But I wouldn't let it happen until it's signed. I wouldn't let it happen until it's signed, though, so please, make sure that information's really-
So what would need to happen? Do you and I will need to approve or not?
Approve the form, right, is that what you're looking for from us?
Approve the policy change in an instance, on a case-by-case basis, is what I would say. And approve this form.
Yep.
And I'm finally doing the-
I'll make a motion that we approve the Camp Raleigh permission slip to be able to walk or ride home, but not until a parent has signed it and dated it and turned it in can that happen, so.
In this one instance, right?
Well, every instant has to, I mean, it has to be brought to somebody to make sure that they, you know, we understand age and all of that, so, I think age has a lot to do with it, in my opinion, so, but yeah, so I-
Alright, I'll second ahead. So, all those in favor of allowing this one individual child to walk to and from camp, approving this form, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright.
No, we don't have to sign, this is just this.
So the record will reflect it. So Celia, I'm sorry that you're the one who sort of stuck doing this, but I appreciate your willingness to help with this. Can you either email the camp folks, or drop it off in the morning, I don't know whether you drop off a cadaver or whatever, let them know that the parents have to sign that tomorrow morning?
Or that it doesn't happen.
Or it doesn't happen, so, I mean, I, because we're, we do have a policy that we don't allow it. We're making it accepted just for this one family, because literally they live across the street from the school. It seems kind of ridiculous.
Signed and dated and returned it back, it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
It's just-
They have to do it tomorrow morning.
Yep, okay, alright.
And so the next thing we had under camp, I'm sorry that you're the one who asked to get stuck having to pass that on, but, I was gonna get there quicker if you do it, I think. Budgeting fund expending authority?
Yeah, seems to be a misunderstanding of who can make those decisions and who can just spend without authorization.
From the select board?
Well, the select board, is my understanding is the deciding factor.
Right.
However.
We're the ones that are able to move money around the recreation budget.
They-
Not the summer rec budget, in general, when you like-
Just anything to do with town administration.
Correct.
So, there was a misunderstanding, and that they could take eleven hundred dollars from the winter rec that's sitting in the budget and move it to summer rec, because they knew that the winter rec wasn't going to happen. However, there seems to be a misunderstanding about budgeting in our town and how it works. Eleven hundred dollars is in there in the budget, but also it's anticipated revenue in the other side. You can't spend the eleven hundred unless you get the eleven hundred in revenue. People don't get that.
Okay, let's just say regardless of offsetting revenue, let's just say there's no requirement for offsetting revenue, just for a moment. Just because there was eleven hundred dollars, or whatever the magic number was, eleven hundred dollars earmarked budgeted for winter rec in our budget, or for flags, or for fireworks, or for petting zoos, or whatever it is. Or for, for overtime, I mean, whatever it is, just because it's in the town budget doesn't mean, doesn't mean a, an appointed committee of-
The recs.
Any appointed committee has, has fiduciary responsibility or authority to move the line down. The only group that has that authority is sitting behind this table.
Exactly, and I tried to tell them that at the last meeting and got overruled.
Okay, well, whoever's overruled you is not gonna-
So, they took their vote, I came back, did my confirmation, sent it back through, still agrees to disagree with me. However, it won't happen because we're not gonna authorize it, so.
I don't know what it is yet, but we would still have to be the one that authorized it.
Well, they wanted to take eleven hundred from winter to bring it into summer. They thought it was money.
I got you.
Not, there is no money.
I got you.
So they were trying to offset their deficit, is what they were trying to do. And so, it isn't gonna happen, because that isn't money, it's-
Right, that is, that is exactly right.
It's where you can put expenses for winter rec.
But my understanding is now that, the email I saw this morning, or this afternoon, was that the hole has resolved itself, because they were actually getting the sound up?
No, it's not resolved itself, that's another whole big issue, and we can talk about that, too.
We do need to talk about it, okay.
Because as far as I know, we're still in the hole, correct? By how much?
I cannot tell you that, you need to speak to the chairs. I can tell you the teen camp had two additional signees, which put us in the positive for teen camp.
Okay, that's what I'm dropping, well, that's the email I sent.
Okay, well, no, the, the Raleigh camp is worse. It was, last time I knew, we were down four thousand dollars.
Oh.
And we had to hire another, another counselor, and we'll have to do two buses now instead. So my question to the, to the rec committee was, if you're over your numbers than you were last year, why aren't we in the positive fund-wise? Because truly, that doesn't make sense to me, and I, nobody could give me an answer. So, even though they have more numbers-
Right.
They don't have enough money, so either budget, the budget wasn't done correctly.
Right.
They aren't charging enough.
Right.
Or, yeah, there's, there's various reasons, but we have to, we have to come in neutral.
Right.
So, we're gonna work really hard on it this fall, to make sure that that's gonna happen, and if it's increasing the pricing or whatever, and they also had a huge increase in salary, which, um-
That's probably where your deficit is, so.
They went up thirty percent. Which is huge. That's, that's where your money's going.
I got you, okay.
So, all of this happened before I got on, or before I got actively involved.
Okay.
So there is some issues with revenue, and I am going to meet with the chairs, and-
When, when are you all meeting again?
Uh, we're not meeting until next week, no.
The committee is not meeting as a group.
We haven't said.
Until the week of July sixteenth.
Okay.
But are you meeting, you said, Denise?
I'm gonna meet with the chairs, hopefully this week.
Okay. So you have more to report next week, please?
I hope so, yeah.
So, besides that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the show? Anyway, that, I heard nothing but glowing things about camp today, so.
I'm not saying that camp isn't doing wonderful things, I'm just saying that there's, you know-
There's some kind of things to order.
There's procedures that need to be followed, and procedures that need to be discussed, and making sure they're enforced.
Yeah, yeah, no, the budgeting fund expending authority business is very clear to me. The, the only group that has the authority to expend funds is right here, so, or to move money around, too.
And I, we just got another bill, a huge amount, from the, the, the director and the co-director, or assistant director, of hours that they've put in, that weren't budgeted, and we have to pay them. Because you can't not volunteer, you can't volunteer on a job.
Right, right, right.
So, this was unexpected, and we are gonna have to have a sit-down and, and talk about this, and I don't know what, I don't know what we're gonna do, but that's even more money on top of what we're already in the hole on.
So you're gonna have a larger conversation with them this week?
Yep.
And report next week to us about it?
I will.
Suzanne's back next week, correct?
Yep. But I, I'm very concerned we are not going to become an level funded, I'm pretty certain, unless you get a bunch of grants.
There's still grants outstanding, so.
There's lots, all of them, but you haven't heard any back, right?
Haven't heard anything back.
So she has, all of her grants are still outstanding, so, I mean, if they all came in, we wouldn't be, we'd still be over.
What, um, I don't, I don't recall, how much did you apply for, Celia? Total, roughly?
Thirty, uh, three thousand, five thousand.
Okay, so, we could break even, or we could be a little under, if we got, or we could be over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so.
From what I can speak to, is the teen camp, we had, we extended the deadline till July twenty-fifth, because it's by the week, and we did have two more people.
And that's what we have to say.
And that-
So that took care of that problem, we're now on the other side of the camp.
But my question is, is can we move money from camp, from teen camp to Camp Raleigh?
It's not too different, it's one budget, recreation, so.
Summer rec.
Summer rec, yeah, I mean, it, you don't, it's good that you keep it separate, so we can see where, where things are going good and things are not so good, but it's, the two of them added together is your bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about that. I would like them both in the positive, but it isn't gonna put that way, but this will override this.
Okay.
But still keep accountability separate, so we'll see how that goes.
Alrighty, so two new hires?
Well, I only knew of one, so can you enlighten me on the second one? See, this is, we, I have to have conversations, because-
Are there hiring forms in there, though, somewhere?
I am deferring you to the chairs.
I only know of one camp- One camp director, counselor.
Yep.
That's the only one I'm aware of, so I'm surprised by the two, no, those are all processed. No, I don't have any forms, I don't have anything for you.
So, I, I mean, I had a conversation with, with Caroline earlier in the day, if I like to go through the agenda of who's not supposed to be talking about, some of these things, kinda don't know what I'm talking about, but. She had mentioned that the camp had had to hire two additional counselors?
Two?
That's, uh-
That's what she said?
That's, well, it's what I'm remembering, and it says two here, so that's why, it could only be one, but, and the, the, there's two problems. Well, there's really only one right now, but it's potentially two, because you're talking about funding votes, but, and this could be exacerbating it, but. The, the group that hired these folks are also sitting behind the table here, so, and I get it, it had to be done quickly, and I, I understand that completely, because there was more kids coming and all that, and they need to be tentative, so. But again, we, we're the hiring authority, so we need to give the permission to hire these individuals, but I can't give permission to hire someone whose name I don't know.
Well, something was on, I saw something on email, do you have that email? One of them was Marshall, right?
You're forwarding it to me now?
It was-
I, I'm pulling it up.
It was sent to my, it's like, I don't have it on my computer. Actually, I think it went to the all select man.
Let's see.
It was late, late this afternoon.
Oh, okay, late this afternoon, then I wouldn't have seen it, because it was dry.
There are three names right there. I don't have last names, I don't have any paperwork.
Well, I only see two names, Valerie and Marshall.
Wait, wait, where are we looking?
Let's see them.
Where is it?
It, I, it didn't, it went to Caroline and the rec. I don't think it went to, to the board.
Any board here, right?
Oh, I got this, oh, but I would have gone to the rec, sorry. Okay, so- So, and then new part-time, right there, and then, so, I'll run it through you. You need to do a screen there, lady. I do. No, it's not working. And then Caroline said, the, the other two more names, okay.
Okay, so.
Oh, I did see that. I don't know anything about that, that's, see, that's concerning to me, because they believe that-
There's two names, there's people looking to hire, yeah, I understand.
Well, they have, they have four names listed there. They, they believe that the responsibility to hire and to negotiate salary is totally on their plate.
Okay. We have, in the, at least the past two years, no, past year, two years, of, of summer camp. No, more than that. I know we've only had this revitalized camp.
This is year two?
Year of two, I understand that, but even before we, the select board hired all these kids that, we didn't pick them, but they were suggested to us by, it was Larry, who ran the camp before, or helped organize with, what's her name, from all, I mean, they would organize, but there was still, there was a list of kids' names, and the select board still hired them, though, so.
And last year, Jody brought forth the names.
Yeah, 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 so. There, there's two problems, there was this transition of, of when the camp was being planned, and when, it's not your fault, because you don't plan when elections happen, when people get sworn in. So there's this, there's this transition issue, too, of when people were getting hired, they're gearing up to get hired, like the senior staff, the director and all that, and the new, I still wanna say, I mean, they've only done this now for one year, volunteer rec committee. Not understanding maybe clearly their delineated roles versus what they think they're supposed to be doing.
Can I make a motion to go into non-public for personnel issues?
Sure.
So I can just speak freely?
We, so we were, you wanna go in and-
For recreation personnel issues.
Okay, so we'll move the, Denise moves that we go into non-public session for, to deal with personnel issues with the recreation department committee, and I will second, there'll be a roll call, Mike, yes, Denise?
Yes.
Yes, we are in a non-public session to deal with personnel issues, because we need to turn off the camera, cameras.
I just tried to send one of the Vinas to you.
Thank you very much. Is that all, Cory?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And I was told to deflect all of the questions to the chairs.
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind that your voice, not, not yours, all of our voices carry out my whole very word.
Very, very lovely.
I forget that sometimes, myself.
You have to know that our biggest problem is Jody. But she's one that's telling these people that it is the committee and not the selectmen. So I don't know how, I mean, she is doing this with me the whole time. So I don't know how I can get this through to the two chairs with Jody back-
I don't know how they understand it, it wasn't right last year, how it would be right this year.
But they say Jody did this last year, though, didn't she? She made those decisions, she just brought it to you for approval, right?
I believe that's what they think.
Right, right, see what I'm saying? So I don't know how to resolve this, and the problem is with Celia being involved, and now she's, you know, she, she's, she's been doing a lot of hard work, she really, really does. And so then, she's like, now you have to direct them to the two chairs, well, you know, I, I'm fine with dealing with Kelly and Dee. The problem is Jody, and now, she has been fighting with me at the meetings, she's been quite rude to me.
I've heard, I heard from Caroline today, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm having a hard time, I don't know how to handle without really being rude to her, and I don't want to go down that road, because that's what she's doing to me, and I'm gonna turn around and do it back.
Yeah, you're really the right thing, why not do that?
But the problem is that we need to have individuals, but she's the one that gave those people the thirty percent increase in pay. And I asked that question, and they just did, they didn't come to you guys and ask that, and they just did this.
As of course, I'm hearing about it right now.
Yeah, yeah. The rec director is making, it's either eighteen or nineteen dollars an hour. Are you kidding me?
And I have to say, when we dropped, we went yesterday to do registration, nine of them introduced themselves to us. They were sitting there, they gave us their T-shirt, they took our check for the extra T-shirt. Great, they, do you think they were, said, oh, I were, we said, oh, we're, I live with all those parents. Oh, nice to meet you, that was it, I was waiting for, and then, but they got into something else, and like, I should have just said, oh, and you're,
Yeah.
Someone, well, I'll ask them what they are.
Yeah.
They, they seemed to know who we are, so that was like, hmm, then I felt, maybe did they introduce us before, or just they don't remember, or?
Yeah, and, and the thing is that, you know, these people who are on the committee, that the chairs, and not, not necessarily the chairs, but Jody has been saying it's okay to hire this person and adding another bus, and, and it's like, we're not making enough money to cover any of these things. to cover any of these things.
Man, you can't just do that.
And I don't, you can't just do.
You have to come to us and talk to us about it.
Exactly.
And what troubles me the most is that she's not understanding that, because she's been in this role, she knows that the select board is responsible for doing all this.
She just needs this, she's not relating that or supporting.
In that position anymore, so she should be.
Right.
Deferred to the person that is, I saw her this morning too and talked to her.
Yeah, um, so that's, that's where I'm, I just wanted you to have that knowledge, that she's the one that's been the driving force of getting these things and spending the money without, you know, and no, no explanation, and then turning it.
They want us to hire. I mean, I'm.
I first, I've heard of it, I'm getting a first name, are you kidding me? I'm not going to hire somebody with a first name. But it's only a first name on there. I think Marshall is Marshall from Morocco, I think, but I don't know. So I, I mean, but if we don't, then they're not going to have the ratio.
Yeah, they need to.
Student, you know, but. And now they're upset with me because.
They're down to this week so far, and then we're going to have to wait another week to hire them officially. As far as the case is now, they're hired, I mean, and I don't have a reason not to hire them, but I also don't, I need to know their names.
Well, exactly, I just get a first name.
We, we usually get an email or, you know, that says, you know, the, the recommendation, committee recommends you hire A, B, and C. We say, okay, great. I'm sure they're wonderful, we'll hire them.
We have that new, two new hires, we don't see anything on the agenda with their names or anything on it. So Caroline's been working with me, she's been great in, for Meet and Vent and, you know, trying to get things going, but I say my worst, my worst person is our previous select board, and I, yeah, I don't know how to.
Well, if it doesn't stop, we just take her off.
Well, mm-hmm. So she contradicts everything that I say.
Spent the entire day there today. So I guess she spent the day there today.
Well, I, I think she had said she was planning on doing that, yeah, yeah, because she heard children are there too, so, but maybe she had today off, but.
I was wondering if it was just because of opening day or?
Could, well, that's what I mean, for the opening day, yeah, yeah, but I kind of think that there might be something going on even further with Celia's kind of like, I can't talk, you need to go to the chairs.
Okay.
Um, so, J, I just wanted to give you the heads up.
So you need to. Get whatever is quick you can on it.
I will, I will.
As your.
Yeah.
I know your life too, so, but.
But do I have the authority to say that we can?
They need to come to you fast quickly when I decide.
So what happens if, if we don't do it tonight, how are we, can I give the authority?
We need to, you need to be mystic, so.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I don't know, I, I. We have to officially hire them, so they get paid. Do they get paid weekly or by week?
I don't know, what's the pay here? Well, you have the checks, do you have paychecks, payroll checks?
I don't get payroll checks, I mean, no one, everyone has to direct.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
I used to have to sign them years ago with the, the fire.
Yeah.
Fires would get paid every, it seems like six months or whatever.
Three months or whatever, yeah, yeah.
But that was it, but I don't have any, I think all those, they all get directed to all the county.
Okay, yeah. All right, um, I'll go tell them I can come in, but I just wanted you to make sure you understood what was going on.
Before, we, we need to find out if it's a payroll, we have to payroll, they need to get paid. If we have to, we can come back, I do go around, and you can come back just in emergency.
Yeah, I'm here a week, I'm fine, yeah.
What time do you do it in the morning?
Oh, I can do it in the morning, I cannot be late, I can do it right, I get out at four thirty, I can do it anytime after, you know, after that.
You're doing it right?
Yeah, we just got all talking to you about being late, so.
No, I don't want, no, I don't.
I can't be late, yeah.
I don't want to care for that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can come in right away, I don't have anything to do the rest of the week, it's, oh, I have a meeting, I have a meeting here Wednesday. Um, I have CIP. So if you want to do it before that, we could.
Okay, if we have to.
I mean, I don't see us not voting them in, but we need names, we need complete names.
Okay, so you know that you forward that I never got, just as a.
I forwarded to you, I have it, I, I have it on my, on my town email address.
Celia said she just tried to send it to you too, it's not coming through, the web, the internet's been weird.
Internet, yeah.
So I would say, the, the email that we have only has first names, we can't hire.
I can't hire someone just with a first name, all right. All right.
I need to get up and move anyways, so, I was in bed for almost a week, they screwed up my bathroom, so I tried to get rid of the bathroom, I'd be like, and like, I was like, oh no, what happened? And I stayed at my mother's house because I didn't need to hold it up and all over me.
Yeah.
I'm on in. Oh, we didn't do it officially, so.
Oh, we'll come out and on top of it.
Second, Mike, yes, Denise?
Yes.
Okay, we officially came out of non-public. Sue you all. Okay, so we're not going to take any action this evening, we, we only have a, a couple of first names, it's hard for me to hire someone based on their first name. So Denise is me, going to be meeting with, with the head or co-chairs of the summer rec committee, or recreation committee, um, to have a conversation about hiring these individuals, and we will come back in a, I'm not sure if this is a payroll week or not, I mean, if these kids are working, they need to get paid.
Well, if it's payroll week though, that's from previous two weeks, so they wouldn't be paying.
They might not be paid for this week, and we need to take, either way, if they're working, and they're working with our kids, they need to be hired officially ASAP, so Denise is going to be meeting or reaching out to them as soon as humanly possible.
Do you know if they work today?
I don't.
So, um, but she's still going to be, you're going to be reaching out to them maybe even tonight to.
Yep.
At least find out when they're going to be able to meet with you.
Yep.
And we'll come back in a, a special meeting with the intended purpose only of hiring or not hiring summer rec counselors, that would be the only reason we'd be coming back. So that's what's going to be happening with, with rec at the moment, okay? Anything else to say about rec?
Yeah, I have a volunteer appointment, um, by Primex, we need to sign, it says, you are hereby recognized as a volunteer in the town of Rollinsburg with the purpose of participating in a summer recreation schedule between June eighteen to August eighteen. Your ten, tenure as a volunteer will continue until your resignation or until your termination by the town or ends of the project, whichever comes first, the purpose of this letter is to comply with provision RSA five oh eight one seven, the volunteer immunity law, as that law may be amended from time to time, thank you for your service. This is, I think this is primarily because she's going to be a driver of her van for team camp.
Oh.
And in lieu of a bus, so I think our insurance is going to, is asking for this to be signed.
Okay, so Primex, our liability company, is asking us to, to appoint Kelly Anderson as an official volunteer of the town of Rollinsburg, so she's covered under our, our liability coverage, so we will.
As well as her own policy, she still has, but this is just being named to the person.
She, because she still has to sign off, and, and, and the parents that allow their children to go in her vehicle, still have to sign off on that form that everyone else has to, but this is, this, this is at Primex's request to, to protect the, the town of Rollinsburg, so. And without objection, I will sign on behalf of the town, so. Remember the date by this point, written and off this evening. All right, so that's taken care of, so is there anything else for, for recreation this evening? I'm not seeing anything, and I'm going to move on to agenda item G, ZBA training funds, and we talked about it a little bit, but as you said, Denise, there are four, four new members of the, of the ZBA. Three full members and one, one alternate. There is a request by the, the, the new chair of the ZBA to have a training for his members. It's probably a really good idea, the, the ZBA handles some very delicate and tricky pieces of planning and zoning law, which if we don't handle it correctly, the, the town of Rollinsburg could be out of quite a bit of money because we could be sued, which I don't think anyone wants to see happen. In the, in the, thank you, in the folder at my request, I, one of the, there are three options for training, that's the way that I see it right now. Attorney Rattigan, who had done training for the planning board, has offered to do it for the ZBA as well, it would be approximately a thousand dollars, I believe, is what Charlie found out from him. Now, I believe that the training that we received from Attorney Rattigan from the planning board's perspect, perspective was very helpful, but it was, I think it was very helpful because I had already served on the planning board for a number of years. It wasn't a, it wasn't sort of the soup to nuts training, nor is that what we asked for, I guess, but, well, we thought there were different issues going on with that, but anyways. Second is, um, the municipal association, which is about five hundred dollars.
Five hundred and fifty.
Five hundred and fifty, and the third is escaping me now.
I'm not sure I saw something here that tells me.
Oh, Charlie, the third was Charlie was going to see if there were any other avenues, I think, but let me just double check, just to make sure that I'm not misquoting him, I don't want to. Bear with me for two seconds here, okay, Rattigan, oh, oh, and Mr. Krebs was the third option. Oh, okay, Mr. Krebs, the plant, town planning consultant responded to Charlie that he does not feel qualified, and that it would be potentially a conflict of interest for him to do this training, although Charlie disagrees on the latter, but anyways. But I don't want to put Mr. Krebs in that position if he thinks it's a conflict, so that's fine. So I, my suggestion is, is that we go with, with, with the municipal association, because that is going to be the more soup to nuts, beginning to end, what a ZBA is supposed to do, procedure, which I think is really, really important, and I know the, the, the chair also agrees that procedure is very, very important, those are the things that contribute when you get sued over.
Yeah.
So, um, it's probably, it's not, it's not proper for the chair really to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion to accept purchase order one four five one to the New Hampshire Municipal Association for on-demand onsite and training for the ZBA for the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I'll second it, now, I, I also should add, we're only supposed to discuss after we make motions, but this would come out of, this is going to come out of, um, of, um, training for the planning board.
Okay.
There is money set aside for, for trainings for that.
Okay.
There's money set aside for, um, select board planning budget, I believe, right, because you had one, now that was it. So obviously, ZBA, ongoing training for ZBA is important, I think, because laws change.
So that's why we wanted to do this.
We'll make sure, make a note of that, we'll make, work on the budget for twenty nineteen, that's important, okay, so all those in favor of purchase order number?
One four five one.
One four five one authorizing funding to the municipal association for training for the ZBA, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no opposition, okay, so thank you, so to the ZBA, thank you, and we thank them for their service, because it's not a, not a board that meets a lot, but when they do, it's important, and the minor cases are one thing, but you get something really complicated and you got to make sure that everything is done by the book, because not, it'll cost you a lot more than five hundred and fifty dollars for training.
Exactly. Can we go back to fire department, I, I guess Mark left, but.
Sure.
Go back there, um, we have an application here, um, this is a credit application that needs the board's signature, Mark recently made a purchase with them, we get a significant discount from municipality by having an account, to set up an account, it's called Whitmer Public Safety Group, and it's for the fire department, and it's to buy emergency equipment, and the authorized purchasers are Mark Rutherford, Kevin Hurd, Dan Toof, and Sean Glidden, and we just need to approve it and then signing credit application.
So it's. I understand I'm pointed, it's just. I wonder what he, I'm trying to think what they sell, I mean, I know we made some purchases in the last couple.
I can't remember, um, I think we voted for something either last week or the week before, um, I can certainly ask Caroline to pull it out for you.
The fire store, so there you go, or the EMS store, so.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it was, it's equipment, we know that.
It's equipment or supplies.
Supplies of some kind, so, but if we're going to make, because we get a significant discount if we purchase this way.
If we have an account, right.
If we want an accountant, so.
Yeah, exactly.
We still purchased via PO and all that, so it's not like you can just call up and.
Well, they may have used a credit card previously.
Right.
So maybe they're finding out that it's, by having an account, you get better deals.
Well, they're still purchasing guidelines in place, so, that they have to follow, so I'm okay with that.
They just want to have accounts so they can go to it.
So are we, are we okay with, why don't we do a motion, what do we have?
Motion to, um, motion to authorize, um, Mark Rutherford in the fire department to purchase, to set up an account to purchase public safety equipment with Whitmer Public Safety Group in Coatesville, Pennsylvania.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And Caroline is in contact as well.
And we get a significant discount by actually having an account with them, I would say we want an account with them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Stick it, I'm sticking it up. Okay, so Paul's integrity we covered, we're going to have Mr. Clark pay a visit or send a letter, whichever is the proper protocol, but I've noticed several things that Patterson Ted mentioned this evening, so. Bateman, we're going to take up last, um, only because I need to read the email from six nineteen to make, to see if I need to go into non-public or not, or if we do, I don't want to make, make people leave again to, just so we can review applications, so. They all become public anyways eventually, but the conversations are not public. Classics Road Policy, review of guidelines, I looked at them again today, and now Suzanne had mentioned before she had, had left that she thought in lieu of, uh, cases that have come before the planning board and potential cases that may come in the future, she thought that they need to be revised again, I've looked at them again today, I'm not sure where she thinks they need to be revised, so my suggestion is we table them until she comes back and she can suggest her revisions.
Was one of the questions that was being asked is whether or not they have to be paved? Didn't we talk about that?
There was a question on, on Rollins Road, if it was in the route of class five standards, then yes, the class five standards require paving.
Okay, okay, because there's going to be something, or maybe it will be something off of Bear Road as well.
Right, yeah, off of Fresh Creek.
Yes, kind of comparing that a little bit, the meeting I had gone to in the place.
Right, 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 although the one off of that one, from what I've heard from the, read from the minutes and heard from folks, is that there's like six or seven or eight different variances that might be required, you want to think up on that road, so.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a simple.
We thought the one on Shady Lane was complicated.
Yeah.
This one is on stairwells.
Yeah.
So maybe that's why she was thinking, but again, I think that, I think we're covered, but that doesn't mean that we can't look at it again, and I, if we're going to do it, I want to do it as a workshop of the three of us and not of us to take a stab at it individually when we miss something, I think it, it's easier to do it that way, but. The visioning for the village, it's still there, the village it is, all right. Woke up in it this morning, still there, do you want to discuss it, do you want to remove it or table it?
Table it, table it.
We'll leave it on for the chair. Oak Street Boundary, well, you know, I honestly, I pretty, I promise you rather, I was going to go this past weekend, and then last week I got the worst stomach bug of my life. I called it stomach bug, it had a very fancy name and a little warrior word, but I went to the doctor and it wasn't fun. I wasn't walking anywhere last week.
Was the far.
Well, any far, it was, wasn't walking far, so it didn't happen again, so I apologize. Well, any far, it was. Wasn't walking far. So it didn't happen again, so I apologize. It's gonna happen, I promise. I'm not gonna say this weekend because I don't know what ailment will fall, so I'm just gonna say it's gonna happen and it will happen sometimes.
I'm gonna be sitting further, further away from you.
You probably should, you probably should. So we've come to standing items. I think, I know you're gonna be working on rec a little bit this week. What else you got going on?
So I am. On Wednesday, I have CIP at 6:30 here with the department heads, as well as the CIP committee and, and rec.
So if you can, if you can get with the rec folks before, and like, not, you're not gonna give them tonight, obviously, but if you can get, if they can give you tomorrow night, which is in their best interest to do that, my intention would be to meet before your CIP meeting.
Fine, yep.
It will last all five minutes, I would imagine, so.
Yep, I will do that.
Okay. Unless they can't for some reason get their rec in a row, but I think if they want, they need to.
Well, if I can do one and, or two, either one of them, but with conversation of names and last names and, you know, how much you're gonna pay them and.
Yeah.
We need all of that.
Yeah.
Um, so that's all I have.
I, all right, this is it?
I'm lucky.
I'm moving a lot of furniture tomorrow night. If anyone else has help, then, actually, other people are, I can't lift anything at the moment, but, yeah. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
We have no building permits for this evening, so we will go through the listed correspondence and I.
I've done a lot.
Excuse myself, I have to look for this email from the 19th, so I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be rude by looking at my email in meetings, but.
We have, New Hampshire Municipal Association has something here for the 2019, 2020 legislative policy process, important dates.
Oh, the municipal association is always helpful when they put up.
I'm gonna ask that I get a hard copy or an email copy of this, if that's possible, because I'll understand it more if I'm just reading it. Do you want to have it sent to you versus? Okay, I'll send a note to Caroline just to see if we can, because there's just no votes on it. It's just telling us what's gonna happen, right?
What's that, the?
Just tells you what the, the year is gonna be about, right?
Well, this is, I'm sorry, this is the, so this is for the, the policy conference on the 14th, right? These are the, the policies that, that the municipal association is recommending they take up. So like, okay, so here's what I just opened up. I know about this only because I work in this board. Public area no smoking local option. To see if the New Hampshire Municipal Association will support legislation to authorize the designation of no smoking zones in public areas by local option. So like, this town of Dairy wanted to ban smoking in their public parks where there are children, like playgrounds, and, but because of preemption law around tobacco, they're not allowed to?
Hmm. That would be public parks, not school parks, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, exactly, because it's, because all, all school grounds are smoke free.
Right.
Um, I'm, I'm the part of coalition who work that deal with it. We don't directly deal with it, but. So they would say, should the municipal association take a position? So if they do take a position that, yes, we're supportive of this legislation, when whatever this bill, some legislator will see this and say, oh, I'm gonna put this bill in, probably someone from Dairy, I would assume, and the municipal association lobbyists would be able to testify in favor of the bill, but only if the members, where members, say, yes, we should do this. In fact, who actually put this in? Say, oh, this was actually submitted by the Parks and Facility Directors of the city of Keene. I don't know. Okay, well, apparently Keene has tried to do it too, and they got a smackdown. Dairy was the biggest one that tried it. Their town beach too, but anyways. Consolidating policies on collective bargaining agreements, you know, to see if the municipal association will oppose legislation that allows municipal employees the right to strike, that's what they. We would, we as a board can vote to say what our position should be, but someone has to go and actually vote for us, and I'm not available on the 14th. I already know that I have another meeting, so.
Okay.
So if you wanna go, I would, I actually don't need to cover that now. Because I think they did email to us. No, no, see, I think they did.
Did they put a slogan?
It was, it was a link as part of, so the municipal association every month or every two weeks? Every, every week during the legislative session sends us an update on what's going on.
Okay.
And that, there was a link in one of the latest ones they just sent us, I think.
Okay, all right, well, I'll ask.
Yeah, Caroline, it's easy, by the way.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I gotta go back to looking for this thing so I know what, just pretend to know what that is. It's called Newslink, by the way, the municipal association's Newslink. Tuesday was the 19th, right? Oh, it's Andrea's thing, I'm looking for an email from Caroline. It's Andrea's, okay, I see it. Just find it, it retires.
Okay, we have, um, it's kinda early, but that's okay. There's a letter here from Richard Gobity.
Yeah.
That I'm aware of that the budget process begins early this year, so I do have a proposal I would like the board to consider. I have noticed that the conference room chairs are getting quite grungy, to say the least. I'm recommending that the current chairs be replaced with new stackable chairs that are not made of fabric. They will eventually get, they will eventually get soiled and or torn. What we have now are chairs that cannot be cleaned and cannot be repaired. You'll notice the condition of the chairs, you'll look at closely or not even so closely. I've located a source for chairs that I'm recommending it to purchase. Thirty new chairs, the cost is thirty dollars for a total of nine hundred dollars. I'm recommending a budget of a thousand dollars. I'm, I'm not sure of the budget line. This would fall under, but is, but that is not my job description.
Fair enough, it's not.
Thank you for sending my proposal, and he has a picture of the chairs.
Are they full or stackable?
They're stackable.
Oh, they're like the hard plastic stackable?
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah. So I don't know which one.
Well, Richard is absolutely correct. These are really, the chairs are, are grungy.
But is it something that?
Oh, we take it up for the budget.
Taken up, yeah, okay.
I know some of them, when you pick them up, they, the arms come off, so he's not wrong. They are, they are in a variety of disrepair, some of them, so.
I'm gonna just say we'll consider it.
Yes, yep, yeah, that's what he wants, so. He just wants to get it in the queue. Smart.
Town Rollinsburg State and New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration. This is the annual request to municipalities to determine what a municipality will utilize form PA 28, taxpayer inventory blank.
Why is it Dubai?
I don't know, what is it? What is a PA 28?
That's, that's the inventory form that we've been talking about, whether we're not gonna do it again.
Duh. Okay, uh, please return this entire form with a section below completed and sign no later than August 24th.
So we have a few more.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in here.
With my luck, it would've been June 15th.
Need to meet with tax collector.
Yeah, with the tax collector, yeah, most definitely.
At the.
Yep.
This is Municipal Environmental Services. This is right up Suzanne's alley.
Is it? Is it about water? Yeah, resilient tidal crossings, there you go. That is quite the culver. That's a serious culver.
Yeah.
That is a very large piece of metal. It's old too, huh? Surrounded by boulders at the beach, wow. What is a resilient tidal crossing, huh? Well, I care about tidal crossings. To give you another reason why you might care for it, if you wanna cross the road, there's a lot of water. The tide comes, if you wanna cross the road, you might wanna cross it. All right, well, we can leave this for Suzanne, see if this is something she's interested in attending. Is this a protocol? Oh, so this is a, this is an asset that's provided by Department of Environmental Services Postal Program to, is something that we have to ask for, or they can, oh, they conduct field assessments of 120 tidal crossings in the seacoast using their assessment protocol. So it's just a tool that we can access through the website. Oh, yes, you're right, this is right up Suzanne's. We'll leave this for her to access that tool that she'd like. And maybe something good for the, also came, is that for the stormwater committee, actually. We're gonna put a note for that, this, their meeting next week sometime, I think I saw.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna double check, make sure that's the only thing in this folder. I think that's what I saw. So it's my intention to go to non-public to discuss the abatement applications and the decisions for or against approving them, and then obviously, they become public once a decision is rendered, but conversations about the applications, I think, are, are protected, but anyways. I recall these, but I don't have anything else. No building permits, we do the correspondence. Any other input? Any other community input for the evening?
I need a meeting next week, and it's been a holiday week sometimes.
Yeah, oh, heck yeah. Heck yeah. I won't be here, but yeah, you can, no, I'm just kidding. I'll be here, I'll be here. I'll be here. The CIP, is that posted?
No.
The meeting?
No.
It needs to be posted.
Well, posted, then I'll, 24 hours, right?
Yeah, yeah, it has to be posted, yes. Caroline uses a handle of four, so.
I'll make sure she does.
The videos?
Sorry.
The videos, does anyone know when they're actually gonna go out?
I don't know what you're talking about.
The videos.
The town videos, when they get posted? I have no idea. All I know is that.
One isn't enough?
There's supposed to be a protocol of, yeah, I don't know, of, I don't know anything, I honestly don't know. I can ask, though. I will try to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I haven't tried to access them. I assumed they were already up, so, but apparently they are not, if you cannot access them. Any other community input for this evening? If not, so our intention, Corey will let you know.
I still have to, you would, I have to put that away.
You can put it away, so, and you all have to put your computer away, I know. So it's our intention to go to non-public just to deal with abatement. As soon as we're done with that, we're not doing anything else but home, so. Also, please, she comes running into that idea, you know.
You have to sign those forms and the blue envelope, though, are those invoices?
Well, I have to, you do it.
Okay.
Can you just put a note on here saying this is all board approved on a case by case basis? So that you're not taking my word for it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I was gonna have Caroline reach out to them too, but I think, and, just so that it's, so this one kid can walk to camp tomorrow morning, the parents need to sign this form and bring it with them tomorrow and drop their kid off, and then they have to at least do that. I mean, they have to follow some kind of protocol, so.
I just don't want it to come with responsibility.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry to dump it on you, but I almost said, could you just brought us the thing?
Six twenty-five.
Time is, it is five to eight. I don't think we'll be much more than half an hour, so Corey, but.
So thank you.
I can, we have to email. I'll send you an email to do that kind of a meeting, okay? So we haven't done it officially, so. Do we do a non-public session to deal with abatement?
I need that we go into non-public session to review abatements.
Second, all those in favor, Mike, yes, Denise?
Yes.
We are now in a non-public session to deal with abatement approvals, applications. That didn't run that long, right?
You said Caroline will send an email to, saying this, thank you.
She what?
Well, you can do it.
What?
The, the, the form approval.
I just signed it.
Yeah, so.
You want me to send an email too?
No, no, that, going forward, going, going forward, that if another family wants to use that form, they can do that, but it's on a case by case basis.
I'll take a picture of it with an email.
Yeah, that, I can do it, I'll send it to you.
Just so they understand that they can use that form is all that you're asking, all right?
Yeah, well, that each one has to come forward to this.
I want a clarification.
Yeah, all right, I'll send it to you.
Sure.
I don't want to.
It's not a blanket, yes, you can do this every time. It's, the form is good for every time, it's just not.
Do you want me to take this down for now?
Yeah, you can take it down.
Yeah, do you mind just taking the, just the camera? You can leave the tripod up if you want.
Do I just do okay and then sign initial?
Yeah, yeah. Want someone else?